Alright, please, we're gonna take the stage. It's time for me to talk, it's time for you guys politely to shut up. I need, I need to go through some rules, and it's, it's a little long. It's gonna take me about five minutes to go through these rules, but it's important that everyone stop talking right now. And, you, I, so, first, I want to thank all of you for coming. Uh, this is a private event, you're my, you're my honored guests, and I'm your honored servant. So, I provided a lot of the food, and the beer, and the wine, and I'm glad to do so, because I love you all. Okay? Having said that, I will ask two things of you tonight. One, be on your best behavior, and two, when a candidate, or the host, or moderator is speaking, please be polite, and don't talk. Okay? The reason why everyone was saying, Jerry, you're so loud a while ago, is because I went over and I had to keep turning up the volume, because you guys kept talking and no one could hear me. I know. So, without further ado, uh, here we go. First, are there, is there anyone in here that has ever served as a public servant, elected to office? Please raise your hand. No, please stand up. Stand up if you've served in a, elected office. I can't, yes, thank you. The reason I do that is because, a lot of times, we honor our firemen, we honor our policemen, we honor our military, but rarely do we ever honor these people that have sacrificed their time and their energies, and in our case, here in Lakeway, for free, and it's a lot. I mean, what these, what these candidates are asking is, in my opinion, kind of silly and stupid, because, I mean, it's a lot. The time they put in, what Mayor Kilgore's put in, what all the council has put in, just, whatever you think it is, triple it, because that's how much time they put in to this. So, I appreciate it, and I think the city does. Okay, so, May 6th is Election Day, and early voting is available from yesterday until May 2nd. This is a nonpartisan forum, there's no left, right, or public, Democrat, we're all nonpartisan. And, and people say, well, why is that? And the reason it's that way is, if you ever go to these city meetings like I do, I'm kind of a test, you know, I go up and talk in front, but if you ever go there, you'll realize that all this stuff really has nothing to do with Democrats, or Republicans, or anything, so it doesn't really matter, so it's, it's nonpartisan. So, feel free to eat and drink during the forum, uh, but just don't be disrespectful to our candidates and, uh, distract them.
(inaudible) One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For clarification, I may not be in Lakeway, I am in Sweetwater. Okay, so, we will proceed with introductions from our candidates, starting with candidate O'Brien.
I, I'm sorry, I have to repeat one thing, because you don't know this. These microphones are very unique in that fact, they're not omnidirectional, and you have to hold them right in front of your mouth like this, because otherwise, if you hold it down here, no one's gonna hear you.
Hi, good evening. I am just absolutely...
Right at your mouth, like this, like this.
I am absolutely overwhelmed by everybody here tonight. Thank you for being here. Uh, you, you honor us. Sometimes this dumb egg needs a little help. So, uh, I am completely overwhelmed and honored by your presence tonight. Thank you for being here. So, I had this great speech all prepared, and I'm gonna start off with something that has become near and dear to my heart. Has become near and dear to my heart, of talking with many of you across the, the city. And that is, I know that of, of late, and you've heard this a lot, from, from all of us up here, but I know of late that we've had a, a rash of crime across the city, with stolen vehicles and burglaries. Um, so my question to you, how many in the audience are moms and dads? You could be voted, but not in this one, so. How many of you have children? How many of you want you and your children to be safe? So, I'm gonna tell you tonight that, when you vote me on the council, priority 1A of everything that I do will be focused on your safety and your children's safety. And there is no, there is no excuse for the crime that's going on anywhere in the world, but especially here. And so, everything that I will be do, I will do on council, will be working with our police department to assure they are empowered to maintain law and order in this community, to keep you safe. First and foremost, I don't care if we do nothing else in this entire community, we're gonna keep you safe, and we're gonna maintain law and order. Beyond that, I am a registered professional engineer with a focus on civil engineering. I look forward to serving as your city council candidate, as bringing a different credential than any other person that you see up here tonight. And so, I ask you to consider that, and I, I would love every vote.
Okay, now, we're gonna go on to candidate Vance.
Just wanted to mention that word. Uh, good evening, everyone. To kind of, um, cover what Kent said, thank you guys so much for being here tonight. My name is Gretchen Vance, and I'm on my second term of the Lakeway City Council, so this would be my third term that I'm running for. Um, I am a, very much like a lot of you, I'm a mom, a sister, a daughter, a wife, and every decision that I make, I make from that perspective, I use that lens to look at everything. Um, I am an owner of a gym, Electric Avenue Athletics, which is just right outside of Sweetwater. And we, um, have a, a pretty nice facility there, we service 700 kids a week, and there's nothing more than I like about kids. They're truthful, they're authentic, and they, um, boy, they tell you the way it is. Um, I've got some hand-drawn signs by them out on the campaign trail, and, I mean, they think I'm skinny, which is pretty fantastic, so. Uh, they're actually my favorite people. Um, I do want to talk a little bit about, um, I know a lot of people in this room are passionate about their candidates, and one thing that I do want to say is that, we really do hope going forward that everybody understands that we're all human beings. Every single one of us is a human being, and we take a lot of information inside of ourselves, and we take that maybe more personally than we should. So, sometimes we may have an unpreferred reality and we want a different future, but what we do between those points, what we do between our unpreferred reality and our future, so our decisions, our choices, our agency, what we do in that space is what defines our future. So, if you want your leaders to have positive change and positive movement, we need positive choices, positive decisions, positive agency, data-driven research, in order to get to a future that we deserve. Thank you.
My name's Chris Horton, I've been a resident here in Rough Hollow for the last nine years. Uh, we moved down from Michigan, uh, once we found a place, couldn't think of any other place I'd wanna move than to this community. Uh, you've probably seen me out on the trails, I'm an avid hike, well, kind of an avid hiker. Leave me to not wanting to see me by the pools, but, I love this community, I love Rough Hollow, I love Lakeway. Um, we have a lot of work to do with the, with the, uh, our parks and our trails. I don't know if any of you, anybody here will use our parks and our trails, I'm sure you've seen this thing, a lot of them lately. Boy, I volunteer with Friends of the Park, and we were cleaning up some of the green belts recently, but, nothing has been done here in Rough Hollow, uh, and if you're out there, you see, I mean, it's dangerous, you know, trees ready to fall on your head, that's, you know, a fire hazard. If any of you've been out here for any length of time, I'm sure you remember the, uh, Steiner Ranch, uh, situation, they had been a number of years back. We gotta make sure that we're mitigating all of these issues now, before it becomes an issue. I've been on the Zoning and Planning Commission now, for the last five years, I'm actually the chairman of the Zoning and Planning Commission, I'm also on the Plan Unit Development Committee, I do a lot of volunteering here within the city and outside of the city. A lot of our kids actually have gone to school together, my kids right now are currently in the, uh, high school, 14, 16 years old. My wife's out here in the audience, thank you very much for showing up. She loves this, this is her favorite. But, I just, you know what? I'm very fortunate to live here, uh, just driving here, at, at every time I go through this community, and, I, I just, I'm overwhelmed with, I can't believe I live here. Like, this is, this isn't where people like me live, but here I am. And, I will do everything I can to protect this community, just remember, we're all volunteers, everybody here wants the best Lakeway, and, I will do whatever I can, I want to be your voice out there, so if you have issues, if you have concerns, bring them to me, I'm always available, text me, call me, email me, whatever it is, see me by the pool, I will be here for you though. But, so, thank you very much, and I appreciate your support.
My name is Kevin Burns, and I'm running, one of five people running for three open-at-large seats, uh, on your city council. I have a law degree, I've been a real estate developer, please don't hate me. Uh, I've been the CEO of a family office, and today I run an institutional money management firm that I founded 30 years ago. I've been... An assistant for the fire department, thank you, sir. I'm proud of my service as a, as a deputy sheriff, I did that for a number of years. My assignment, when I retired, I was a detective sergeant on an homicide team at Sheriff's Major Crimes. I was fortunate enough to meet my wife, who's lived here for 30 years, in 2018, thank you, Kate, and I got here as soon as I could. Uh, so, I'm a relative newcomer, but I started trying to help out as soon as I got here. Uh, I'm on the Rough Hollow South HOA Board, I'm on the Travis County Vote 11 Board, I serve on the City Building Commission. Uh, I'd like to serve on your city council. I stand for lower taxes, less intrusive government, with a light regulatory touch, mitigated traffic as we develop the rest of the city, and most importantly, responsible spending, including a fully funded police department. I watched on television as a lone black and white police car in Austin backed away from what the reporter called a street takeover. When I was a cop, we called that a riot. And the anarchy that's next door cannot be allowed to spill over here, not on my watch. I'm Kevin Burns, and I'm reporting for duty. I ask you to vote for me, and I thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Uh, so, I, I'm gonna go with a couple others, and I'm really happy to see all you guys here, Christopher knows, Gretchen knows, those who sit up on the dais. We're often talking to an empty room. A little closer. Thank you. I'm also finding some of my words may go in there, I'm trying to get a little closer. No, we're often talking to an empty room, we're often, you know, it's, it's so much different to see people here, to see people that are interested, people that want to give their opinion, people that want to be involved. I love, I mean, I know you're gonna vote, that's the reason you're here, but I love seeing all the arms go up and ask that question. I just, thank you guys for showing up, thank you guys for voting. There's just not enough people that care as much as you do, and I really appreciate that, we all do. Uh, this group, we're all volunteers, you know, there's been a lot of activity that's been going on with this campaign. We, as a community, can rise above this. This is an entirely volunteer-run city, everybody that gets up here, whether, win or lose, whatever role we're in, whatever we've been doing, we're all here trying to help our neighbors out, and I'd like everybody to just keep that in mind, and that's why people show up, there's no paychecks involved, there's no payoffs involved. It's because they care about Lakeway, they want it to be better, so I just wanted to throw it out there, given some of the things that are going on. As far as me, um, went to Vanderbilt, have an engineering degree, have an economics degree, uh, my family's been in Texas since the mid-1800s, uh, I didn't get here until 1990, first came to Lakeway about 30 years ago, loved it, loved the hill country, loved the people, this is just the kind of place I wanna be. First chance I got, moved my family back here, we've been here in Lakeway for about eight years. Uh, I've been volunteering in Lakeway for, uh, since I got here, in a number of positions, with the Lake Travis High School Band, working on the Treasury Committee, working on the Parks and Rec Committee, Friends of the Park, Comprehension Plan, did that in 2018, got it approved in 2020, a lot of you were involved in that, we're about to do it again in a couple of years, um, and then I've been on the Southern Commission with Chris here for the last couple of years, so. Uh, Lakeway is really in my blood, I really love it here, and I'm all about helping to make this town better for all of us, so, thank you for coming. Alright, thank y'all. Jerry, are we gonna move to the questions, and start, are we gonna start grabbing the questions from the room?
Okay, so that's the part where no one claps, okay? And here's the part where I see like you have two questions, or someone, raise your hand, and a couple of us will come by, pick them up, and bring them to Jason, and then he will look at them, and he's like, oh, no way, or he'll be like, yeah, that's good, and he'll, he'll then ask the questions.
Hopefully, it's legible.
So, you should only be putting, asking for, you know, the, our Cs, but we'll take the Ms, I suppose. But we're looking for the Cs.
Come on, y'all, we could have more questions than that. Alright, well, I need some... I imagine this is a very popular one, and proud. We'll keep track again.
Also, if, if the same question is passed forward, he's only gonna ask it once, so, he'll look it up, he'll pick the best of the three, maybe the, the same question, he'll ask that one question, and he won't read you.
Okay, we're gonna start with candidate O'Brien, and each will have an opportunity to respond to the question. So, why did the council vote down the new school when the people you serve voted for it? I guess that's not necessarily, I'd love to get your tape, though, from the other candidates, on what you might have done differently than them.
So, I wasn't on council, I'm not on council. I don't know the deliberations that occurred, uh, behind, uh, in, in working with the school district, um, on the school issue, but I can tell you that, uh, when I get on council, you'll hear me always say that I work with the three Cs, and that is collaboration, coordination, and communication. So, going forward, as I sit on council, one of the things that you can be sure of is that we're gonna be working closely with all of our partners in this region, school district being, being top in that, because what do we need, what do we need for our kids, most of all? Education. So, we need to be sure that our school district is providing for that education as best we can. And so, the best way that we can do that is to work as a city, be a leader, and work collaboratively with the district, to assure that we are working with them to provide for the schools that are needed, the improvements that are needed, whether it's roadway, or whatever it might be, to assure that the school can be built, it can serve our kids, it can serve us, we can get in, get our kids, and get out without the backup of traffic that is occurring today. So, I will be focused on that when I'm sitting on council, not on with the school district, but all of our other regional partners as well. Thank you.
I can answer that one, because I was up on the dais and we had that conversation. And not only that, I also participated in some of the district meetings between the district engineer, I think this is really important, these meetings occurred between district engineers, the superintendent, and myself, council member Samansky, uh, the mayor. And in these conversations, and in the emails leading prior to the conversations, we had a few very major sticking points with the school district, which are the same with any developer. We need to see a five-year traffic study, we need to make sure the ingress and egress of a building is safe, and these were our two major contentions. We could never get a traffic study, they told us in open session that they didn't know who was going to school there, which we know is not correct, we know who was going to school there. Secondly, the safety issue. They were assuming that Travis County would give them permission to use the Bee Creek Sports Complex that is almost newly constructed for an ingress and egress point, and an emergency access point, but at that time, that it came in front of the dais, Travis County had not given that permission yet. There is no guarantee Travis County would have given that permission. So, we could have made a decision that was unsafe for your children, but we chose to make a decision that was safe for your children. Thank you.
Alright, well, you know, I agree with, I'm also battling some allergies, I agree with the, I got your one. I agree with the fact that we need another school, I think we all know that we need another school. My niece and nephew go to Rough Hollow Elementary, it's bursting in the seams, that's not a question. The people did vote for a new school, that is 100% correct, but they didn't necessarily vote it and want it in that location. We have an elementary school a half a mile from that school, we have a middle school a quarter of a mile from that school, we have the ball fields, people, but, but people don't realize is, is that in Rough Hollow, it's already been determined that there's also gonna be commercial around the roundabout, it's gonna continue down along Bee Creek to 71. You tell me in the morning, you're gonna have a row of, what, 80 cars waiting to pull into an elementary school, there's not gonna be people that want, say, hey, well, if I go up there and go around the roundabout, I can make a right, it's just, it's gonna be a mess. They're creating a, a short-term, they're creating a long-term problem for a short-term solution. City council doesn't always agree unanimously on everything, in fact, I think most of the times, they don't agree unanimously on everything. In this particular case, they agreed unanimously that that was a bad location for that school. We do need a school, 100%, I'm all for us building another school, I voted for the bond for the additional school, I just don't think that putting it right there is, is the right place. Not only that, the people in Sweetwater, who that school would serve, they deserve to have a school in their community. None of those kids are gonna be able to walk or ride their bike across 71 to go to that school, like the kids do in Rough Hollow Elementary. So, why isn't the school district serving them the same way they're serving every other school in the district? Thank you.
Okay, good answer, good answer by Gretchen. Um, good addendum by Chris, and I'm gonna be a little bit blunter. I was asked in an earlier forum, Kevin, you're, you're, used to be a real estate developer, what does a bad development look like to you? And I said, well, that's pretty easy, a bad development is one that doesn't meet our zoning, planning, and building standards, or doesn't mitigate its traffic impacts. And this project came before council twice, did not mitigate its traffic impacts, and the council voted unanimously to turn it down. So, build it in Sweetwater, if there's not a site in Sweetwater, then let's work with the school district. It's Lakeway streets, ISD schools, but it's our kids, let's get together and figure out where to put the darn school.
Yeah, this is one of, this is...
So, I, I, I tested everything, and they all worked.
This is one of those, definitely, takes more than 90 seconds to answer. Gretchen gave you, uh, an insight to it, I, I think Chris really nailed the most important thing, it was seven to nothing. It, it wasn't just two wins, it was three wins, it just came before city council, it was two times that LTISD was given direct feedback about what they needed to do to fix this, and they came back the third time and they hadn't fixed it. There, there's some very good reasons why this school wasn't voted for in that case. Now, set that aside for a moment, do we need the school? Yes. Did everybody vote for the school, for the bond? Yes. We voted for the money, I voted for the money, I did not vote for some of the other money, because I'm not, I'm happy with how little LTISD has been managing some of that. But for the schools, I think we all know we need it. But here's the thing, I'm not on council either, but I sit in all of the meetings. I also sit in on the LTISD meetings, did anybody sit in on their meetings and listen to them discuss it? Did you hear the comments that they made after, when they were ranting about, about Lakeway, and how poorly we manage this? There was one in there that really should have caught your, your attention. One of those gentlemen said, "We've been working in Sweetwater for nine years to try to get a school there, and we couldn't do it, we needed this one in Lakeway." They failed for nine years to get the school where it belongs, and came in in six months and tried to show it in Lakeway in a site that was too small and didn't have appropriate traffic, and they couldn't build the school that they needed, and they wanted to make it our fault. Okay? Now, maybe we can find a way to, to work for that location, I think there's a couple of different locations that the conversation has already advanced, but the point is, we do have to have a little bit more cooperation, we have a little more communication, we need to have LTISD take a little more responsibility for how they're managing forward. Okay, moving on to the next question. If elected, what is the first thing you submit as an agenda item to begin the process of council review? And why? Sorry. If elected, what is the first thing you submit as an agenda item to begin the process of council review?
Hello? I was just making sure we were going...
Okay, go ahead.
I would say, my name's first.
Well, no, normally we rotate, so one answers the first question, two answers the second, third.
This is one of my set of times, so, you know, we'll, we'll do it that way.
So, so that's a tough question for me, because being on council, if I have an immediate need for an agenda item, then we put it on the agenda. Um, so, I would say, going, we're looking at June, so June, July, and August is pretty tough for council for new agenda items, because we're working on the budget. I think the budget will not be too difficult this year, I think next year, we're gonna have a little bit more problem with it, as, um, our property tax base starts to shrink as development starts to slow down, just because we are slowing things down. But one of the initiatives that I really wanna work with, uh, with our chief on is, and the courts, is our punitive schedule for distracted driving. I am a mom of eight kids, or a blended family, so don't get too excited about that, but they have, we've taught them all to drive, they've all had a car, and we've bought insurance for all of them. And the number one cause of accidents in, in our teenagers today is distracted driving, cellphone use. But actually, the number one group who uses cellphones are moms. And so, that may not make me really popular with the moms in the group, but your kids are watching you, they're watching you use your phone, making that appointment on the phone, they're watching what you do, and then when they're 16 or 17, they don't have the experience you have to use the phone and to drive. And they are causing fatal accidents for themselves and for their friends. So, this is a really important initiative to me, I think it's one of our biggest problems on the road race today, and I'd like to see it corrected. Thank you.
Alright, so one of the things I'd like to see, uh, elected council, first thing, is reviewing our, our parks plan. You know, we have, again, as I mentioned earlier, we have great parks, we have great open spaces, we have great trails, but they're in really bad shape. We gotta evaluate what kind of funding we have going to all of these different areas, so, you know, do we need to put a parks bond into place to fund some of these initiatives? If you've seen the Master Park Plans, or the Master Park Plan that we just recently came up with, it's amazing, but it's $22 million. So, what in that plan should stay, what in that plan should go? I don't think that, you know, one of the items on there was a lazy river where the swim center, and it ran very low on the list of priorities, I gotta imagine that's gonna be one of the most expensive things to build. So, what you wanna do is, you wanna take a look at what we have, take a look at where we wanna go with it, and look at the funding that we need in order to achieve that goal. So, if you could put this much money towards this many things, or this much money towards one thing, I would say we try to get the biggest bang for our one thing, I would say we try to hit the biggest bang for our buck initially, so that way we're improving our parks, we're improving our trails, we're improving the quality of life. You know, kids are able to have, you know, additional places where they can go and run around and play basketball. I know a lot of people here play pickleball. I recently played the other day for my first time. I like it. My dad beat me. He's sitting over here. That old guy right there, he beat me, so. Not that one. Anyways, the other old guy. But anyways, we need to make sure though that we're investing back into the community, into these spaces that, that, you know, our, our community centers and really help us to, you know, form a community around. Thank you.
So as a new guy on council, I don't put anything on the agenda for consideration right away. I'll be fully immersed in the budget process, ensuring the responsible spending I talked about during my introduction. I'll be continuing my conversations with Aaron Carr, our building official, and Glenn Cohen, our police chief, to make sure that they have the resources that they need to do, the jobs that they need to do.
Well, I'll be raising Chris for the parks. If anybody knows my history, I have a lot of history with the parks, have a lot of affinity with the parks in particular, trying to get some gardens started up around the city. So I'll certainly be raising Chris to that. But since you already covered it, I think one of my others, it's equally as important, and that's the 620 overlay. The 620 widening has been a project that's been in the planning for, for many years. It was approved back in 2019, and then it put on hold because the money was put elsewhere by Campbell. That's going to be coming back. It's starting to move through the pipeline, and it's going to come back in 2025. But what we need to do to prepare for that is some very heavy sausage making behind the scenes, about 164, 168 odd businesses that are directly impacted when that road gets widened, about 380 some odd businesses off the roads, on all the feeder roads that get impacted by the traffic that's going to be rerouted. If we are not, we, we need to be sending the right signal to those businesses now so they know how to plan over the next two, three, four, five years, so the 620 widening is not just a mess for all of us. And we don't have businesses that can no longer operate because the parking lot's been cut out or the driveway is no longer there. There's some very serious consequences when this road starts to get widened for anybody who's moved, trying to move around Lakeway at that time. So that work has been going on. You can see it on the city website. If anybody wants some insight into it, I can help you get there. Just let us know. But it's definitely one of the top priorities and it starts moving faster.
So I'm, I'm going to continue that discussion, Dan, because it's very, 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 very important. So the improvements to 620 is a once in a generation level of improvement that we can expect in Lakeway. Actually, it's probably a once in a lifetime level of improvement. I will tell you that as a 40-plus-year engineer working with and for TechStop, I have looked at what they have proposed as part of the schematic, and I will tell you, I have some real concerns about what is being proposed to be constructed. I have no criticism of TechStop, and what they've proposed meets their design criteria, meets their processes. But I don't know how many of you have a hard time making U-turns with, with the current raise medium. I could probably get everybody raising their hand in here. I'm going to tell you that in the proposed condition after construction, that's not going to change a whole lot. Yes, the pavement will be a little bit wider, but your ability to make those U-turns is not greatly improved by that. Plus, I'm going to tell you that I've done some studies on what was, what is being proposed by TechStop, and I will tell you that any truck pulling a boat, any truck pulling a landscape trailer, any vehicle of that size will not be able to make the U-turn in the proposed condition without running over the curb on the outside. Any vehicle larger than that will actually run over the sidewalk and maybe off behind the sidewalk. So I've already started discussions with TechStop. I've had multiple meetings with them already about the improvements that we can make to that to improve those U-turns. I look forward to talking with you about that. Thank you, dear. Are you sure that was a minute and a half?
Okay. I think this next question flows nicely to what you were just mentioning is, this is for all the candidates, of course. How will you work with TechStop, BK, Travis County to expedite traffic congestion issues since the growth is outpacing our roads?
Okay, Chris, think about that for one second. I want to give you a second time. I give up. Okay, it was brought to my attention that this young man did not mention his name, and I don't know if that's true, but during the introductions. This is candidate Dan Martell, okay? And if you want to clap, you, okay. I went back to Mayor Kilgore to verify it, and had several people say, who is that? Because you unfortunately didn't say your name. So now you got some special attention. How about that?
Thank you.
Okay, Chris, you can repeat the question if you want.
I'm good. Did you want to repeat it for everybody else, though?
More or less.
How are you going to work regionally to make 620 a more traffic-induced environment with all the growth coming into the area and us having limited funds to be able to do anything about that currently? But one of the things we need to do is we need to work together regional. It's not just a Lakeway issue. It's not just a BK issue. It's not just, you know, a Hudson Bend issue. We need to make sure that we're working with all of these partners to make 620 a much safer road. That also includes not only the 620 widening, which is set to start here in a couple of years, and, you know, we are working on the overlay and how it's going to impact all the businesses and the ways going to, you know, you're going to be able to traverse to get into different shopping complexes. We also need to make sure though that we're getting alternate routes to be able to get into a lot of these places. We're working on the main street coming in through Lowman's, so that way you don't have to go on the 620 over the four speed bumps over there in front of the old Thai Spice to get to EGV. We got to have connectivity between all of these roads. We got to have roads that connect feeders behind a lot of these shopping complexes so you're not going from one shopping complex out onto 620 to the next one, out onto 620 to do a turnaround, to come back around that. We're wasting time doing that. We got to make sure that whatever we put in place for Lakeway, we just recently passed the bond, so we have money to do a lot of these things. We also need to make sure that we have additional paths, shared use paths, different things for, you know, golf carts, being able to connect different areas within the city, so you don't always have to jump into your vehicle if you want to drive up to Lakeway Market or if you want to go to, you know, wherever. So we need to make sure we're really focusing on connectivity. Thank you.
So the, the 620 project is, is massive. It's, it's a TechStop service. They're going to work on 620 all the way from 71 up to US 183. It's like 19 miles or something. I think our challenge in Lakeway is going to be taking care of our 600-odd businesses that are going to be impacted when they start tearing up the street and doing their construction. So that, that's going to be my primary focus. It's great to talk about coordinating regionally and all this kind of stuff. I'm worried about our local businesses and the impact of this construction, and it's going to be significant, and it's going to be for a long period of time on those businesses. That's something that we need to do the best we can to make it.
Thank you. And I am very fond of that. Thank you. Yeah, the thing to realize here, there's just no quick fixes. All of Western Travis County is growing. The, the traffic's going to keep growing. A lot of the traffic that we have on 620 is past their trapping, and it's just, they want to get from one side of Lakeway to the other, and then they want to get back, and it affects all of us. So we have to continue to work with the people. I, I guess what I want to point out is these conversations are constant. They're ongoing all the time. And I was doing the comprehensive plan back in 2018, the first four conversations we had with BK and the constable area and the, the different traffic org, or organizations that are around Lakeway. I mean, we wanted to get that full picture of what's going on in the region and understand what the growth plan is. So we've been doing that for years, and that, those weren't the first conversations, right? So I understand it's frustrating, but the city is constantly managing this day in and day out, and we are looking at all of the opportunities that we have to address these traffic problems. Now, we start to run into issues. Chris brought up one of the key ones. We need to have more connectors off of 620 so the traffic never gets on there in the first place. But as soon as you start opening up these connectors, now you're pushing cars into neighborhoods, and the neighbors don't want it there. And so we've tried, Gretchen can tell you, that these are conversations that have been raised and dealt with for years and with different levels of success, let's call it, okay? What I'm going to tell you is the conversation has to come more into the public eye. We have to get more people involved, and we have to raise awareness that we have to start making some of these hard decisions. We have connectors in Lakeway that are not, oh, I'm sorry, I misread the sign.
I just stopped playing games.
Well, hopefully, my minute and a half, I'd already started. So let me continue on with what I started a minute ago, and, and that is, that what TechStop is proposing is not going to serve you, and is not going to serve me adequately. Will it be in improved condition? Absolutely. But we as a community need to expect that we get more out of that. My idea and my thought, my design idea that I'm already talking to TechStop about, they are already looking at it, is that each of the U-turn locations is to add additional geometry or pavement to the outside so you can increase the radius to allow larger vehicles to maneuver and make that U-turn. They're looking at that already. Or, and/or, we may need to look at providing additional improvements at, at strategic locations so larger vehicles can make the turns. Our businesses are already suffering from the standpoint of, of traffic even getting to them relative to existing conditions. Once it's, once it's improved, we need to be sure that they can, that can be returned. So another thought I want to do is I want to work with our partners, the city of B Cave, another idea I've already proposed and talking with TechStop about, is developing a traffic signal system that is coordinated, programmed and timed so that when you get a green light at one location, you're hitting a green light, green light, green light, so that we may, we optimize the flow-through. A lot of our challenges in Lakeway right now is that we go from a green light to a red light and we just continue to stop, start, stop, start, and we don't have opportunity to move traffic through. That's an idea that I have, and I'm interested in making that happen. Thank you.
We're friends.
Okay, so I'm going to actually go back to the roots of the question, which was, what are we doing regionally to make sure 620 moves forward? So Commissioner Howard with Travis County, Vicki Goodwin and Ellen Troxler, who are representatives on the state level, have been working together in this legislative session. Number one, to make sure this project is funded. We can talk about it all day long, but if the money is not there, it's not going to get built. They took the money from this project about three and a half years ago to finish the 35 connection up in Waco. So if you've got a kid in Dallas or you've got a child in Baylor, that's a really great thing for you, but it has, it delayed the 620 project. Now, the city of Lakeway has already donated, well, not donated, has already allocated their money. It's not really a donation. We are paying for our portion of the right-of-way. So all of this land that they're taking to expand it, that has to be paid for. It's about $30 million on the Lakeway side. The B Cave side is a little bit more extensive, and they have not funded theirs yet. They haven't voted nor funded. So that's a bit of, they, they need to kind of move forward on that. Talked to Kara about that last week, and they, that should be coming up on their agenda in the next few sessions so that that money gets allocated, because until that's allocated, TechStop won't allocate the funds to us. So we're hoping that that gets allocated soon and we can start carrying on with this project. Commissioner Howard and the state representatives, along with our staff, BK staff, Mayor King and Kilgore, have all been working together with the legislature though to make sure that this project is moving forward. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Moving to the next question. Will you implement a plan to lower the property tax rate in Rough Hollow to be more in line with Old Lakeway? And can you do it from Sweetwater, too? We're friends.
All y'all from Sweetwater? All y'all from Sweetwater, you're on your own. I, I said I was the low tax and responsible spending guy. If you look at your property tax bill, the lion's share of it goes to schools. Not that much of it goes to the city of Lakeway. Much of the city's funding comes from sales tax revenue that is subpoenaed to the city. But I will tell you that in, in my service as a director of Travis County, MUD 11, I did vote last September to lower the tax rate. So that's what you can expect from me.
Yeah, I feel for you. When I moved here eight years ago, we lived in Rough Hollow. My wife wanted to live in Rough Hollow, and she probably still is not happy with me for not picking that house in Rough Hollow. Those taxes are, are tough. Here's the thing, as far as I know, actually, what I do know, this is Texas state law. They allow developers to come in and put together an agreement and line up their, their water and their utilities and the other things, and they're able to put those structures in place. And Lakeway has no control over that that I'm aware of. Now, if somebody has a conversation to be had, I'm happy to support you on that. I, I, the taxes in Rough Hollow are tough. So if you've got an angle there, if that's something that we want to look into, bring it to me. I'm happy to support you on it. Well, I think you're dealing with state of Texas, though, so let me know if somebody sees different after this.
Thank you, Dan. Hello. Okay. Thank you, Dan, because that was going to be my answer, too. Unfortunately, from a city council perspective, the only thing that we have an ability to control is our own city tax rate. And I will commit to you that I will work every year that I'm on the council to assure that that tax rate is as low as it can be and that your money is spent in the most optimal manner that it can be spent to assure that we save as much as we can and you keep as much in your pocket as you can. I will, I commit to you to that. Relative to Rough Hollow, as it was noted, there are several districts out here that are taxing districts that the city of Lakeway has no control over, whether it be water districts or whether HOA dues and those sort of things. And that doesn't mean we can't work with our partners in this area, the districts, the water districts and such, to assure that what is being done is optimized. I like what Kevin said, and working to try to lower the tax limit, I mean, the tax rate every chance we can, and again, sure that you keep as much money in, in your pocket as you can, because I like to keep as much money in my pocket as I can. So you'll know I'll be interested in that. Thank you.
Okay, so the Rough Hollow tax rate consists of LTISD, city of Lakeway. Now, your city of Lakeway portion of your tax is .539 for every $100 valuation, and that's the same in Rough Hollow as it is anywhere in Lakeway. So if you're paying a Lakeway city tax, you're paying that tax rate to Lakeway. Now, we reduced that significantly this year. We went from, I think, .1689 to .1569. I think that's the reduction that we did. This is where they get you guys in Rough Hollow, is when they built Rough Hollow, they took out a bond to build all the utilities, the water, the sewer, all of that. That is a tax on your tax bill. Will your taxes reduce? Yes. 20, I believe it was a 20-year bond, so as that bond starts to progress out, that will fall off. The other issue you have, there's a very small part of Rough Hollow, which is over by Rough Hollow Elementary, where EDS 6 and EDS 8 overlay each other, so you're paying an EDS 6 and an EDS tax. The city is actually working on that right now with Lake Travis Fire and Rescue to try to shift that so that you guys are only paying one tax in that small section. It's not very many, it's about 100 homes. Oh, emergency districts, your emergency service district, sorry. So it's, it's your fire, your fire, your paramedics, things, things as that such. That doesn't come out of the city of Lakeway budget, that's its own separate thing. Thank you.
It's the ESD, so in case anybody just wanted to make sure they had the correct acronym. So I don't know what's more fun, talking about taxes or paying taxes, so I'm going to, it's just neither. So I guess it's kind of fortunate I get to go last because there really isn't much left to talk about after all of that. So let me talk about how we can keep our taxes lower, though, as a city, that everything else with regards to Rough Hollow has already been addressed. And our comprehensive plan, they talk about having additional retail and commercial space along 620 and 71. We need to make sure that we're enhancing our 620-71 corridor, so that way we're pulling retail sales tax out of that area as opposed to relying solely on, or not solely, but heavily on, our property taxes. Well, we've been building out as a city, the additional houses being built have offset those property, you know, have offset those expenses, so we were able to maintain our tax rate at what it was or lower it. As we reach build-out as a city, what we're going to have to do is we're going to have to find additional sources of revenue. We have about a 65% property tax to 35% sales tax. You look at BK, BK has about an 85% sales tax to 15% property tax.
You look at BK, BK has about 85% sales tax to 15% property tax. Those numbers could be a little bit off, but... So what we need to do is we need to make sure that we're enhancing our entire 620-71 corridor, keeping it commercial, so we can put retail in there, so we can capture that sales tax and reinvest it into the city. That'll help keep all of our taxes low.
Okay, and I think due to time, from what I understand from Jerry, this will be our final question, and then we'll take a short break. So among the voters, there is concern around retaining the beauty of Lakeway. What are one or two specific ways you intend towards working towards that goal? As well, what is your biggest concern that may prevent you, the council, or candidates, from preserving Lakeway?
So let's see, so I'm going to be paying an extra, say, $100 a year to have more parks in Lakeway, more developed parks, and more facilities in those parks. Just curious. Say it's probably a good 65, 70%, okay? I want to highlight a couple of numbers that you heard a moment ago, because you need to think about it for a second. Your tax bills here are high, right? We don't have income tax, so it's all our property tax, and we pay some pretty good taxes there. 93% and some change is not Lakeway, okay? Our taxes, the total, is about 7%, 7.2. We've lowered it every year for the last four years. Very responsible fiscal management in Lakeway. This is not a problem that we have. We have been really working on this, and the counties that we have now and the ones that we've had before have done a very good job here, right? However, when you're not collecting tax, one of the impacts is you're underinvesting in your community. So we have a Parks, a master Parks Plan, specifically to this question, that has been talked about for almost 20 years now, and we've done a lot of work to get it forward, to get it structured, so that it is ready to go, but it's not funded, and it hasn't been funded for years. That's what Chris and I were talking about earlier. We want to start talking about how to fund that, how to start breaking it up into some incremental pieces, and put it out in front of the citizens and say, "Hey, we're talking about half a percent, 1% of your 7% of the taxes that you're paying." It's a couple of hundred dollars a year on a million-dollar home. This is not much money to start reinvesting in Lakeway, and that's what I'd like to see us do.
Is it working? Okay. So I very much echo what Dan had to say. Our parks are very important. We have lots of opportunities out here as well. I will have to tell you, we moved here 15 years ago, before there was a Ruffalo, and when Ruffalo was started, and we'd drive through here, and we'd see what was going on with our hills and our trees and those sort of things, it was kind of... But I am so impressed with what has been created out here. This is a beautiful community, beautiful. You should be proud of it, those of you who live out here. I'm proud of it as a Lakeway resident. And I think what we need to do, and what I've done in the past, relative to maintaining the beauty of the areas, and when people want to come in and do improvements, developments, that we need to work with them individually upfront, assuring that those who want to develop, those who want to do new things or different things with their property is in keeping with the vision of this community. And we have a comprehensive plan that helps guide us in that. But when we're working with our developer partners, right, when we're partnering with them, and they're bringing improvements, but they're working within the vision of Lakeway, that's how we keep Lakeway beautiful. And so I'm looking forward to doing that when you hold me on the council. Thank you.
I want to touch on the Parks Plan for just a second. We're going to kind of do the Reader's Digest version. The council just approved the last Parks Plan a couple of sessions ago. We do expect that to go to bond in November. I think that's what you'll see. We'll send that to bond, that's going to... But Butler Park, which is the park behind Ruffalo, that piece of land, we approved the engineering for that at the last meeting, so that will start sooner than later, which will be a really nice piece of property, a nice part for Ruffalo. I think that one of the most important things we've done inside the parameters of being fiscally conservative, is that when we have a developer come in front of the city, we ask them to enter into a development agreement or a planned unit development. And what that does is we have an ordinance that says, if you build X amount of land, you have to give us X amount of parkland. There's a formula, and it's different. It varies depending on the size of the development. One thing that we have been doing in the square at Lowman's, which is part of the Main Street Plan, that park dedication was seven times what's required. And the reason it's seven times more is because as the builder asks for variances, those variances, is we give those. We have a fiduciary duty to you guys to say, "This variance has value," because it's going to cost them this much less to do business, because we're giving them this variance, so therefore we want you to return it to our citizens and parkland. And that's been a high priority for this council. Thank you.
Well, one thing I think that we can do in order to keep Lakeway looking as good as possible is we've got to have more guys like Jason over here. We're working the city, but we're really written a curve up a little bit, so I'm going to give that off my chest there.
Now, I said you should see us twice.
But there are a lot of things that we can do, even on a smaller scale, without having the, you know, the Parks Bond passed or anything at this particular point. Sure, most of you drive up and down Lakeway Boulevard every single day, and if you've gone, you've seen that there's been a lot of trees that have been removed or damaged due to either disease, or storms, or bad drivers. We need to start replanting them. Really, I'm not sure how somebody knocks over a tree, but it happened the other day. So we need to make sure that we're replacing these trees now. I heard a quote a while back that said, "A wise man plants a tree whose shade he'll never sit underneath." And I think that really struck a chord, because that's what we need to be doing. If we're not taking care of that boulevard, if we're not taking care of our other spaces, our other boulevards in the city, eventually it's just going to be a grassy area down the middle of the road, and nobody's going to go down there. If you ever walk in, you walk your dogs, I mean, you get to see a lot of your neighbors walking up and down Lakeway Boulevard, and through a lot of different areas in the city. So we need to make sure that we're doing things like that. We need to make sure, like, when something has been coming through Zoning and Planning Commission, which I'm the chairman of, we need to make sure that whatever they're trying to do is conducive with our city's comprehensive plan, and one of that is increased parkland. So when there was going to be the stop sign, we're going to make them over again.
The Parks Master Plan is a good piece of work, and we should thank and congratulate the volunteers who spent their time to get that to the point where our council could approve it. And I don't have a lot to add to that. I would say that we have a large amount, several millions of dollars of hotel occupancy tax money, and Texas state law is, there are nine specific scriptures around how that's spent, but some of them have to do with recreational opportunities and things of that nature. And I want to spend a little bit more time looking at that and see if we can appropriately expend some of those dollars in this fashion. Thanks.
Okay. I think that wraps up our first session, but can we give these fine...